And video good. Good. Clerk Hall, are you on?
I am.
Very good. All right. Do I take that as we're ready to go? Very good. So noting the time is 1:02, I'll call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for this pre-mapping public hearing of the County San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission, also known as the IRC. As always, it's an honor to be here today to conduct the next of our IRC's pre-mapping public hearings to hear primarily from you, the public, about your communities, your interests, and your goals as we continue our work. We're taking public input in particular today on your neighborhood, district boundaries, communities of interest, although, of course, we, while located in Carlsbad today, we're taking input from anywhere in the county. I also want to note that today's format is that of a public hearing, which includes the legal requirement that the commission may not discuss or take action on public input offered today, except to ask brief clarifying questions or to place an item brought up in public comment on the agenda of a future IRC meeting. And for the purposes of today's meetings, commissioners, and especially those in the room, it'll be easiest for me to recognize you if you can raise a virtual hand. But if not, I understand both co-Vice Chair Garcia and co-Vice Chair Katerina are in the room, and I'll look to them to politely interrupt if there are clarifying questions to be asked. Today's hearing, as I think is clear, is part of a series of IRC public hearings intended primarily as listening sessions. Again, we want to listen and learn as much as we can about you and your communities. For now, I'll begin by saying that this information is critical because it will inform the work of that core mission I mentioned, specifically to draw new boundaries for the elections of each of the five members of the County Board of Supervisors. For that reason, hearing from the public at these pre-mapping hearings intentionally becomes, comes before we begin our line-drawing work that the IRC will begin taking up in early October. I'll begin the formal portion of this meeting by asking our clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting. David?
Thank you, Chair Baim. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at san diego county.gov/redistricting. We ask that individuals who wish to speak to the commission completed form in advance for planning purposes. Individuals participating remotely are asked to submit an online request, and all individuals wishing to speak in person can complete a physical speaker slip. Staff have speaker slips available in the room. Having said that, all timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting, either in person or remotely, will be honored, regardless of whether you have submitted an advance request. Chair Baim?
Thank you, David. We now move to the roll call. David, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair Baim.
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Dostal?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Inman? Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Here.
Commissioner Russ? Commissioner Serbin?
Here.
Thank you, Chair Baim. We do have a forum.
Thank you very much, David. So to start the actual presentation we'll have before we hear from the public, let me turn, I believe, to Commissioner Chen to begin the presentations. Chris, assuming you're there, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. We pull up the slides, please. There we go. So in case you don't know why you're here, we're here to talk about redistricting. As you probably do know, the federal government does a census every 10 years. So every 10 years, we look at the districts they're drawn and change them based on changes in the population to make sure that we have fairness and equal representation. Next slide, please. I think Chairman Baim covered some of this already. So in redistricting, you know, we do redistricting at the state level, we redistrict at the city level, we redistricting at the county level. As Chair Baim mentioned, our role as this commission is to look at the county districts. There are five super royal districts in San Diego County, and so we are here to make sure that those are redrawn in a way that reflects the new numbers of the census changes up and down in population, that type of thing. All right, next slide. So there are some criteria used to redraw district boundaries. They are legally required of us. One is to have a reasonably equal population. So again, we look at the census data, we see the changes in population, we draw district lines to make sure that we have reasonably equal populations. That is required by the U.S. Constitution. Two, we want to comply with the Voting Rights Act. That makes sure that minorities have an opportunity to elect representatives of their choice. Three, we want to make sure that those boundaries are contiguous. So we don't have islands here and there, but the entire districts that we create have to be contiguous. Four, we want to minimize division of cities, neighborhoods, and communities of interest. We'll talk more about what a community of interest is. I see there are a lot of blue shirts here. I think you guys have defined yourselves. Either it's a huge coincidence, or you guys have created a community of interest around your, you was on the airport. Five, they must be geographically compact. That means from a point of view of population density, we want to make sure that they are dense from that perspective. All right, we may not, and this is important, and why we are an independent commission, we may not draw districts that favor a political party, favor a, any candidates or that type of thing. So we have representatives on our commission that are Republicans, Democrats, independents, nonpartisan, and we make sure that as we make decisions, they are nonpartisans, that we can make sure and not to favor anybody by, as what is commonly known, gerrymandering. We will avoid that at all. All right, next slide, please. Okay, these criteria specific to San Diego County. So those are the ones that every redistricting commission anywhere has to follow. So San Diego County has a couple of others, which is at least three districts shall include unincorporated territory. There are 18 incorporated cities in San Diego County. You can see on the graphics there by color what those cities are. But as you can also see, most of the area landmass in San Diego County is not incorporated. So those unincorporated areas, again, at least three have to be, three of the districts have to have unincorporated territory. Two of them of those districts must be primarily unincorporated. So as we look at the different criteria, we have to balance all these different priorities and make sure that we try and meet all of them as we redraw these districting lines. Awesome. There, I think that's it. Okay, next slide, please. All right. Did we skip the slide about District 5? We're missing a slide that looks at District 5 and the population, that type of thing. So yeah, we missed the slide. So there is, there's one more slide that shows the diversity of District 5 that's specific to, I guess it's not in the deck. So it's specific to District 5, and it would show the current District 5. It shows 1,800 square miles. We are a very large district over landmass. We clearly have the best-looking and most intelligent residents in District 5. So we hope to continue that in the future, but there's a great diversity here. You know, we go from the ocean all the way to the desert currently, and we have a broad diversity of industries from, you know, the military bases. We had Native American reservations. We even have Legoland down the street. So District 5 currently is a very diverse district. And again, we haven't made preconceptions about what District 5 will look like or even which District Carlsbad will be in, but we will be looking at that stuff in the future. And with that, I would like to chair, turn this over to co-chair Garcia.
Sorry. Thank you, Chris. And I'd like to welcome all of you for joining us today and taking time out of a lovely Saturday afternoon to provide us your input. And one other thing I want to point out is the three presenters. Chris, myself, and Commissioner Stephanie Brown are all residents of District 5, which is why we're presenting to you tonight. So how will the County of San Diego Redistricting Commission gather information to redraw boundaries? Actually, I'm sorry. The slides do seem to be, there is another slide that's missing, and I'll just speak to it right now, even though you don't see it up in front of you. I'm supposed to tell you why redistricting is important and why it matters. Redistricting matters because how maps are drawn and how communities and neighborhoods get grouped together or separated can affect whose voices are heard on Election Day. And this will be the case for the next decade. The lines we draw will last until the next census. Redistricting done properly and impartially, as my colleague Chris pointed out, ensures that communities have a fair opportunity to elect a representative of their choice. In the IRC's case, in our case, we'll draw the new district boundaries for the five members of the Board of Supervisors. And the Board of Supervisors are responsible for making decisions about how the county's budget gets allocated. Maybe that was the previous slide. I'm not sure. We had a slide that showed the county's budget for the year. They just adopted a budget that's over $7 billion.
There you go.
And the county is responsible for many things. All kinds of social services, distribution of healthcare, the COVID response, vaccinations, roads, jails, a number of things. So the decisions that are made by the Board of Supervisors, by those people who we elect, will have an impact on you, whether you live in an unincorporated part of the county or whether you live in one of the 18 incorporated cities. So, oh, there's that slide. Thank you. So the next slide. How will the commission gather information to redraw new boundaries? Well, the first and perhaps most important bit of information that we're going to be using is the 2020 census data, which was obtained from the census count, which was, took place last year. And in a moment, we'll take a look at some of those preliminary numbers. Second, we will use public input. Information we gather from you to help us learn about and understand communities of interest. So let's talk a little bit, next slide, about communities of interest. They've been mentioned a couple of times. A community of interest, sometimes we call it a COI, is a contiguous population. That means a population that lives pretty close together, that shares common social or economic interests. And for that reason, they should be grouped together. They should be kept together within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. To be clear, communities of interest are not defined by their relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. A COI might be defined by a common culture, a common language, common background. But there are many other ways to define a COI. The example that we have in our presentation is a neighborhood that is adjacent to a shipping port, but maybe for purposes of today, a COI might be defined because they live near an airport, a small regional airport. And the concerns and issues that arise from having an airport as your neighbor means that you, you know, that's a, that's a shared, common interest. And you have, you would like a representative who knows and understands those issues and can represent you at the Board of Supervisors. And the only way we hear about these COIs, truthfully, is from you, is from the public. The census data gives us a lot of information about demographics and all sorts of information, but it doesn't necessarily tell us about issues and concerns in communities that bring people together. So thank you again for being here today and sharing information about your COIs. In case you have, in case you'd like to understand a little bit more about how you can, how you might be a part of a COI or how you could identify yourself as part of a COI, here are some questions. Does your neighborhood share certain celebrations or traditions, like street festivals or parades? Are there important places where your community gathers, like parks or other community centers? Does your community have a history that's unique or special to itself? Other questions you may ask, are you part of a community who has issues that have not been adequately addressed by your elected representatives? Has your community come together to advocate for important services, better schools, roads, or health centers in your neighborhood? So public hearings like this one today are expressly offered for the purpose of hearing from the public about their community and especially about COIs. So now you've, you've heard about COIs. Now I'm going to tell you how you can provide public input on your community interest. You can come to a public hearing like this one today. We have two more coming up. This one was designated for District 5, but we will hear testimony from anybody in the county at any one of our hearings. Go to our website to find dates for all of our meetings. You can submit written testimony via email or snail mail. And again, are all of that information about how you can email us or how you can, our address is on our website, and you can submit written testimony at any time. You can draw a map of your community. Show us the boundaries. Show us the key locations in your community and explain why this is a community of interest and submit that map. We also have a Community Builder tool on our website that you can use to draw that map. And in all cases, provide as much detail as you can about your community, what, what your shared interests and concerns are. And to the extent possible, draw us a picture, if you will, of the boundaries of your community. The Community Builder tool that was developed by our demographics consultant, Flow Analytics, is available, like I said, on the webpage. It's designed to help the public submit information about their COI to the IRC. It walks you through and sort of queues you as to the specific information that would be the most helpful for us. We really encourage members of the public to use this tool to help us gather the data that we can't find otherwise. It's a critical part of this process, and our consultant, Flow, has tried to make the tool as accessible and user-friendly as possible. So let's move on to the next slide. The unadjusted census data. So here, we're taking a little peek at the preliminary information that we have on the census data. This table shows both 2010 and 2020 census population totals for our county and each of the five districts. So what we do is we take the total population, and it's divided by five to provide the ideal population per district. That's what we're aiming for. Of course, it's, you can imagine, would be practically impossible to have that exact number in each district. So we're allowed a percent deviation, which is the district population divided by ideal population. And this shows as a percentage how far a district is from its ideal value. One goal of redistricting is to get these deviations as close to zero as possible. By definition, the 2010 districts do have reasonably equal populations. And as expected, you can see on the slide that there's been some increases in the districts of the population. And our job, one of our jobs will be to rebalance the populations in those districts so that they're closer to the, the new ideal. You can see the growth was uneven. District 3's deviation is now over ideal by 1.7%. It was only 0.2% back in 2010 when those, the lines were drawn. District 1 is now under the ideal by 2.8%. It was under the ideal in 2010, but by a lesser amount, 1.5% before. So I, let's see, I think I'll leave it here for just a moment. I see people looking intently at this slide, so I don't want to move on too quickly. So one more second.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I'll, I'll just win with a reminder that
Um, so I'll now pass it over to my colleague, Commissioner Brown, who will tell us some more.
Okay, before I start my presentation, I need you to do a little housekeeping information for you. If you need to use the restroom, it's through the doors to the, to your left, I guess. And out, you'll be out into a hall and you'll see it easily. So that's my presentation. All righty, so we're on slide 13, is it? No, I don't have any, I don't have any numbers. So change the slide, please, the next slide. Okay. So I'm going to tell you, by law, the County of San Diego IRC must, we must hold public meetings. So we have had regularly scheduled IRC meetings twice monthly since last November, and we were forming our commission at that point. So we have those meetings to conduct business as well as gather testimony from the public. This, this meeting that we have today is just strictly a public meeting, and we will open it up for your comments later on. But we do hold our normal protocol meetings and do business for the commission. And then we have had these public meetings at the same time, and you've stopped our meetings to hold those, open them up for the public. You can also go on our regular meetings on our website and participate in it. We do Zoom meetings. Most of us are, have been meeting virtually throughout the year because of the COVID problems. But you're welcome to join with us on that. You don't have to say a word. You can just listen in if you want, or you can participate. So we do open it up for public comment through our discussions of different matters that we're talking about. So we also are, we have to, our whole goal is to draw some draft maps so that we can present those to you and get an idea of whether that's meeting your, your needs as the public so that we can get our final maps drawn for defining what the different supervisor, supervisorial, supervisory districts are. So let's see here. And lastly, after we've gone through the public transparent process, we will adopt the final map that will be used for the County Board of Supervisors for the next decade. So it's always based on the census, and it's good for 10 years. We want to really stress to you here that we are an independent commission of citizen volunteers. We operate independently from the influence of our elected officials, and we're responsible only to you, the public, in our, in our duty to draw fair and accurate maps. So that's kind of changed over the years, and now the power has gone to the public. And we try to take into consideration everything you've, you're giving us information-wise for your districts as well as what we have to meet requirement-wise through Voters' Rights Act and so forth. Okay? So next slide, please. And we're on that, okay? We have scheduled eight pre-mapping public scheduled hearings, public hearings scheduled, and included one in each district. And we also tried to include ones on, at different times during the day, somewhere in the evening, somewhere in the daytime, somewhere on Saturdays, for instance, this one, just so that we could be more accessible to you, the public, to come and make your presentations. So says you will see the slide, the schedule of remaining meetings. We are currently on September 18th, Green Dragon Tavern. We have two more public meetings before we start drawing maps, and we will end up with a couple of meetings, public meetings, after we've started drawing the rough map. So after today, there'll be some, a meeting at Vista Civic Center, and also one final one at the Spring Valley Community Center. You're welcome to go to those meetings as well, if you'd like. Okay, the next slide, please. We have, most of this information you can find on our website, and it's drawyourcommunity.com. You can find that there. A pretty, pretty friendly website to use. Okay, so the redistricting timeline. Here's the timeline that shows the activities and the timing that the IRC is planning from now until the final map is adopted. We are currently in the pre-mapping public hearing stage through the end of September. And the U.S., the U.S. Census Bureau recently released, they were supposed to have it to us last April, so we were running around like crazy trying to do a lot of the other things that we could get done early in anticipation of later census and be able to fit it all in and get it all done. And you'll see why in a few seconds here, a few minutes. So the Census Bureau recently released the raw data to the states, and the data is being processed by the state to create California's official redistricting database. We expect to receive that database here by the end of September. So until we get that, we can't really start drawing the maps on that. Then, the beginning of the draft maps happen, and that goes into early into mid-October. And each draft map will be published to the public for public comment. We will also be holding at least two public hearings during this map drawing phase to hear from the public about the proposed new district boundaries. Finally, we will adopt a final map for the county. The current deadline for that final map of adoption is December 15th. So we're working pretty hard now trying to get everything going for you. So we really appreciate this turnout. This is really wonderful. And we're hoping to give you all a chance here in a few minutes to be able to start voicing your opinions there, letting us know. The dates on the final maps are still, could still be subject to change possibly. We have some requests in because we got the data from the census so late that we were hoping that maybe they could postpone the date that the final map would be due until January 14th. So that's possible. It's still out there, but it's unlikely that it's going to happen. We don't know at this point. We're all shooting for the December 15th deadline at this point. Okay. So stay tuned. Our priority is to ensure that the public has ample opportunity to participate in the redistricting district process and also ensure that we have time to, needed to gather all the information so that we can draw your maps as fair and as accurate as possible. Because keep in mind, once we draw those maps and they're finalized, they're, they're there for 10 years till the next census. So we're committed to ensuring that we're as fair as possible. That's why we all volunteered for this commission is so that we could represent you. And let's see, we got another map or another. So here's a way for you to stay in touch. You might want to take a picture of this thing because it gives you our website address. It gives, gives you our email address. If you want to send us any comments or any suggestions or, here's a phone number you can reach us by. We're very accessible. So an address, you'll find that is, as you start talking about drawing maps, you know, we'll take them in any way, shape, or form that we can understand them. So the better, the, you know, if you just take a photocopy of them, of the map of the County of San Diego and, and draw your lines there, you'll see some maps on this website, too, that will already, already show you the current districts. So you can kind of give us some information, give us as much information as you can so we know that we're addressing your needs. Okay, so what else does it have on there? Community builder, online survey, and a QR code. I guess you could have just done that, huh? And it would have all gone in there. Okay, so the next slide. We'd like you to participate and stay involved. So if you have questions, comments, or anything regarding redistricting, it doesn't have to be about the COIs, community of interest. Please contact us. The slide here, did we just do that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, pre-mapping public hearing. This concludes the overview presentation to kick off this pre-mapping public hearing. So now, we're going to get to the heart of why we're all here and listen to you, the public. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to David Hall, our clerk, and he'll tell us about any public speakers that have let us know that they're interested in coming to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Before I get started, I think they may have a bit of housekeeping to address.
Thanks very much, and I apologize for that. I want to offer my thanks to the commissioners for their presentation, but I had a misstatement at the beginning, and I want to make sure everyone's completely clear. There are some legal reasons for this as well. But to be clear, today is one of our general public hearings. We are tasked We are tasked, as the commissioners explained, with having at least one hearing in each district in the county. For scheduling purposes, that hearing for District 5 will actually be this coming Thursday in Vista. And I'll explain at the end of the meeting the details of how that meeting will work and where it will be. But for today's purposes, this meeting, particularly because it's on a Saturday, is designed to be a general meeting that in effect happens to be in District 5, because we know there are various issues. And I join Co-Vice Chair Garcia and my fellow commissioners in welcoming all those who came today. Thank you very much, because it shows the value of having it. But for our purposes, and especially for the commissioners to understand, today's hearing is indeed a general hearing. This coming Thursday's hearing on the 23rd will be the District 5 specific hearing. I also just wanted to note for members of the public who are attending, all that information that you just saw will be available on our website. The website was listed, as you saw, but I know our staff in the room would be helped, happy to help direct you to the right parts of it, and you can always call them and get in contact if you need more information. With that, let me get on to the good part. David, please go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bayman. One more bit of housekeeping for the audio record. Commissioner Corleak has joined the meeting. So we do have 20 speakers who have requested to address the commission in person, and we have one who has requested to address the commission remotely. I'd like to note that we do define group presentations as presentations during which two or more people speak, as opposed to one person representing others. So if you want to speak as a group, you're welcome to do so, but I'm going to ask you to identify the participants who will be speaking. I'd also like to note that we received 26 ecomments and three letters for this hearing that either have been or will be distributed to the commission and posted online. The commission will first hear from those in person who have submitted requests to speak. Next, I'll call on those who are participating remotely, who have submitted requests to speak in advance of the hearing. Then we will hear from any remaining public comment from those present. Even if you haven't filled out a speaker slip or choose not to give your name, the commission would welcome your comments. Finally, we'll hear from any remaining public comment from those participating remotely. And each speaker will be allocated three minutes to address the commission. So I'll begin with those who have requested to speak to the commission in person in advance. I'll call your name, I'll ask you to come to the podium. And again, you'll have three minutes, you'll see a timer on the screen behind you. We will begin with Teresa Beauchamp, followed by Michael Schertzr. And if you're agreeable to doing so, please begin with your name for the audio record.
Teresa Beauchamp. Dear Commissioners, thank you for your service and your excellent efforts in community outreach on the county-level redistricting process. My name is Teresa Beauchamp, I am a 33-year resident of Encinitas, and have served as a physician assistant in family medicine for over 25 years. I support a redistricting map that includes Encinitas in the coastal corridor with Solana Beach, Del Mar, La Jolla, south to Coronado. Our sister cities hold the following common interests. Number one, environmental. Encinitas, Solana Beach, Del Mar, south to Coronado residents love the beauty, exercise, and recreational opportunities provided by our coastline and ocean. As stewards of the coastline, our combined political voices have worked hard to successfully obtain federal and county resources to manage bluff erosion and sewage runoff. Encinitas and Solana Beach share guardianship of the San Lejo Lagoon Habitat and trail that connects our cities. We also are connected by our coastal rail trail, which offers a gorgeous 9.6 mile to walk and ride bikes through these sister cities. Number two, public health. Encinitas and La Jolla are home to both Scripps Hospitals and share a strong sense of responsibility to ensure the safety of our healthcare workers and patients by upholding county and state public health safety mandates. Number three, racial justice and socioeconomic equity. Encinitas for Equality works in tandem with Solana Beach for Equality, North County Stand Up for Racial Justice, and the Sister Cities Project. These North County Justice Allies are primarily located in Encinitas, Solana Beach, and Del Mar. Additionally, Los Analitos de Encinitas collaborates with Solana Beach organizations that include the Boys and Girls Club, Casa de Amistad, and La Colonia Community Foundation to support our Latinx residents. It is important to keep predominantly affluent activists with a passion for justice in the same district. My vision for District 3 is a remapping with a north-south orientation rather than its current H-shaped west-to-east orientation. A north-south orientation better reflects our natural community of common interests of suburban coastal residents that take our role seriously as guardians of our coastline, ocean, healthcare workers, and advocates for social justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Schertzr, followed by Shirley Anderson.
First of all, I want to commend you guys for volunteering for this job. I think that's pretty cool. My name is Michael Schertzr, I'm in District 5. Teacher for 30 years, attorney for 35 years, quite involved in local politics. And I will speak to community of interest simply because I don't have any data to discuss about populations, Voting Rights Act, boundary contiguousness, and geographical compactness. So the only thing I'm actually knowledgeable about is my own community. So I'll talk to you about the relationship that Carlsbad has with its existing boundary partners. For example, Oceanside and Carlsbad share a lagoon known as Buena Vista. There are completed plans to transform this naturally closed lagoon into one that will be open to the ocean. Now, this is a major change in modern period of time. It may have been open to the ocean before, but in terms of humans being here with sophisticated types of lives that we have, it's, this is a major change. So we'll need close monitoring during and after construction with Oceanside. And the Coast Highway also has train tracks that run across lagoons. It's a lot of work to do. Oceanside and Carlsbad cannot be separated. Yagua Heryonda watershed drains about 30 square miles of land in Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and Oceanside. This is the middle lagoon here. Avoiding the negative impacts of land use and infrastructure on the watershed is critical. Enhancing the quality of water must be a priority for the health of the entire habitat and human use. Pretty funky now. Climate change adds to the urgency. All this requires geographically focused cooperation between the aforementioned cities. Again, these cities cannot be separated simply because there is a major lagoon here, okay? And it was man-made, following natural landforms. And again, that requires all the communities to discuss it, and it's a very important landform. Finally, Palomar Airport directly impacts Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and Oceanside. And it has an impact on the air, land, use groundwater, and human health, among other things. As a resident of Carlsbad and an attorney working as a volunteer with Citizens for a Friendly Airport, there it is. The county, as the owner of the airport, should certainly recognize the importance of communicating potential airport changes with all the impacted cities. County has not done this. I expect some outreach from county to the residents.
Sir, I'm afraid your time is expired.
That's okay, I got my point across.
Thank you. Shirley Anderson, followed by George Shoah.
Hi, thank you for having this forum here today. My name is Shirley Anderson, I live in District 5, I live in Carlsbad. If you were to put a pin on Palomar Airport and draw a 10-mile radius, you would have my focal point of community interest. These are my neighbors, my community, and my impact area related to Palomar Airport. But on a more personal level, my community, I look always north. I live in the northeast portion of Carlsbad. So when I look at where I want to shop, where I want to go to the movies, it's usually San Marcos. Where I want to go to the theater, it's usually the Moonlight. In Vista, where I want to go and walk on the beach is normally Oceanside because of the pier and the strand. So these are the communities that I identify with, and this is the reason why I support that Carlsbad and Vista, Oceanside, San Marcos, Escondido, where I love to go to the wineries, all stay as part of District 5.
Thank you. George Shoah, followed by Mary Ann Viney.
Thank you for volunteering. This is a really important cause. My name is George Shoah, I'm a technology professional, I live in Carlsbad. And there are few common of interest, community of interests here. I think we all spoke to some of them, but one of the key ones here is geographical common of interest. So we talk about the lagoon, we talked about the beaches. I quite often visit the beaches, and one of the great things also about the area is that there is really common interest in terms of the environmental. So for example, the airport is a really important cause. I live right about two miles away from the airport. Within 10 miles radius, I think we already spoke about that, you can cover some of the San Marcos, Oceanside, Vista, and Carlsbad. That affects all of these communities. Over the years, we've seen, we've started seeing the effects, and we continue to see the effects of the airport. So clearly, there will be much more interest in those communities, making sure that we're doing the right things for those communities. So keeping Carlsbad as part of that district is one primary goal that I'm hoping that we actually reach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Viney, followed by Keith Blackburn.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Viney. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, it's really wonderful. I am a resident of Carlsbad, I've been a scientist for 25 years, and for the past 15 years, a volunteer for advocating for public health in terms of the environment. So I am opposed to removing Carlsbad, to moving Carlsbad to District 3. It would be detrimental to have Carlsbad moved to District 3 and separated from the communities of Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido. These are the communities of interest that along with Carlsbad will be most impacted by the McCullin-Palomar Airport activity. They also represent, along with Carlsbad, the 78 corridor for transportation and mobility purposes. Palomar Airport brings together the communities that I've just mentioned with the negative impact of the flight pattern. The citizens in these communities are joined together by this constant threat to the environment and to public health by noise, emission particles, and traffic. This is a community concern. We are all in the flight path. For years, there has been a citizen effort to get the county to listen to their airport concerns. Many have attended the Palomar Airport Advisory Committee, only to be dismissed and ignored. We stand united in District 5 and do not want to see these boundaries changed. These cities are all impacted by the Palomar Airport, and we need to ensure our concerns regarding the airport expansion are represented as a united voice preserving the quality of life for residents of North San Diego County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keith Blackburn, followed by Frank Sung.
Good morning, afternoon, afternoon. Thank you for listening to us, I'm Keith Blackburn. I'm a Carlsbad Council member, I represent District 2 in Carlsbad. As the speakers who spoke before me, I'm going to ask that you keep the North County as one unit, but I'm going to give you an additional reason. The North County has often felt as though we're the maybe less-loved stepchild of San Diego. And as a result, the mayors and supervisor have put together a project called Innovate 78. And what that is, is we looked at, rather than the North County cities all fighting each other for business, that we work together as a corridor, which also includes Valley Center and Fallbrook, then they would be represented by the supervisor. But the idea of the five mayors of the four, or five North County cities, which would be Carlsbad, Oceanside, San Marcos, Vista, Escondido, also have the representation of one solid supervisor to help with that. So my, my request is that you don't fragment that. We've worked very hard to get that through, because we, we feel a little bit like we get forgotten by the county, not just the county, but the entire county of San Diego. And so we ask that you keep that as one larger district. Thank you so much for hearing us.
Thank you. Frank Sung, followed by Dee Forsberg.
Good afternoon, I want to add my thanks for you guys volunteering. It's good to see neighbors. Chris and I are like a few doors apart, so it's, hopefully it's a labor of love. So my name is Frank Sung, I'm a Carlsbad resident for about 20 years, technology, sales background, understand business. And as I look at your presentation, I've, I've been really learning about the process. And it's, and what I was really amazed at was Commissioner Garcia's slide that just shows that, my goodness, that the census has shown that perhaps your job is already done, meaning, along with councilperson Blackburn's comments, I am advocating to consider keeping District 5 the way it is. And, and some of my other colleagues have said, I volunteer as part of a citizens group that's trying to keep Palomar Airport friendly. And I'm going to email, thank you for the slide on your email address. I'll, I'll email you after the meeting, the Federal Aviation Administration's Flight Pattern Map. And it very much affects Oceanside, Carlsbad, San Marcos, Vista, Escondido, all the way to Valley Center. So between the 78 traffic corridor, between Palomar Airport flight maps, I think you have some very helpful input to just natural communities of interest. This particular community of interest that I am part of in terms of keeping the airport as a friendly general aviation airport, as opposed to expanding the runway to match that of John Wayne and attracting, you know, larger jets all hours of the, of the day. We have over 2,000 people that subscribe to our newsletter. That's a very, that's a community of interest, if you will, that just supports and reinforces what we've been saying about the natural affinities of, of these cities the way it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dee Forsberg, followed by Kathy Bagwell. Okay, Kathy Bagwell, followed by Vincent Nelson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Bagwell. I've been a resident of Shadow Ridge Community in Vista for 13 years, and a board member of South Vista Communities, which, since night, since 2015, and that was started in 2006. South Vista is a nonprofit organization. We address a variety of issues that impact the quality of life and the environment in South Vista, and that also extends into our surrounding cities. Which is why we support and have valued the C4FA, the short version, in its work against the expansion of McCullin-Palomar Airport. And we are definitely opposed to moving Carlsbad to District 3. I think the previous speakers have been very specific, so I won't have to go into all that they went into. Moving Carlsbad into another district would have a negative impact on the North County corridor. That would bear, and we would bear, the brunt of the airport expansion. So I respectfully ask that you keep Carlsbad in District 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Vincent Nelson, followed by Molly Woods.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, good to see you. My name is Vincent Nelson, I'm a 50-year resident of North County. I've lived in Vista and San Marcos, is the last 21 years here in Carlsbad. I am a member of Citizens for a Friendly Airport. I am sympathetic to the task you have in front of you to district this area of San Diego. And I know there are a lot of other opinions on the subject. Diego, and I know there are a lot of other opinions on the subject. I believe that McClellan-Palomar Airport is one of the singular properties that has the potential to do great damage in the area. And the impact on all of these communities, on the corridor, the 78 corridor, is apparent. Right now, there hasn't been a lot of impact, but in the future, as with sea level rise, there could be a great deal of impact on these communities. Pollution, of course, it's not just pollution. Noise has an impact on our schools and the kids and the teachers in their classrooms. And in some respects, that's enough for me to want to regulate this airport. I am confident that keeping or getting the unincorporated area of Escondido can be added to our current District Five, which includes, of course, Escondido, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and Carlsbad. And these are the areas that would suffer the greatest impact if they are separated from District Five. And I thank you for time and attention.
Thank you. Molly Woods, followed by Vince Loughney.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Molly Woods Drake. I'm a seven-year resident of Encinitas, a labor organizer and president of a local equity-based nonprofit. I'm here today speaking in support of a redistricting map that includes Encinitas in the coastal corridor with Solana Beach, Del Mar, Carmel Valley, La Jolla, south to Coronado. While we love our Carlsbad neighbors to the north, I'm happy to hear today that we're in agreement that they should remain with the northern and eastern cities and Encinitas with the south. A few communities of interest are the following. Education. While I am not a parent, I someday plan to be and very much follow the mindset that there is no such thing as other people's children. My top priority in redistricting is maintaining the community connection of the San De Guido Union High School District. SDU-HSD serves a combination of middle and high school students from elementary schools in Encinitas, Rancho Santa Fe, Cardiff, Solana Beach, Carmel Valley, and Del Mar. It's important that we honor the connections created by our students and their parents in maintaining a district that encompasses these cities. Two, environmental. As a native East Coaster, I've spent all of my life wanting to live along the Southern California coast and take great pride in protecting the coast so that generations to come can enjoy it. Encinitas, Solana Beach, Del Mar, south to Coronado, residents are connected and bonded through our love for the ocean and our lagoon habitats. This means we also share the same responsibility for caring for the oceans, managing the coastal bluff erosion, and finding solutions to wastewater runoff. Just this morning, I joined neighbors from Solana Beach to participate in the Coastal Cleanup Day along the beaches of Cardiff. These are issues held very closely to our coastal community hearts. Racial justice and socioeconomic equity. As the president and co-founder of Encinitas for Equality, I also recognize the importance of maintaining the connection of a predominantly white and affluent activist who understand our own privilege and seek to create more equitable inviting communities in our own backyards and throughout San Diego. Encinitas for Equality and Solana Beach for Equality work closely with North County Surge as well as the Sister Cities Project. These North County Justice Allies are primarily located in Encinitas, Solana Beach, and Del Mar. When I envision what communities of interest mean and reflect, I see an Encinitas north to Coronado-south coastal community that prioritizes leading on climate change, protecting our oceans and beaches, addressing commuting along the Five, and raises our children in school systems that create lasting friendships and community connection. Thank you.
Thank you. Vince Loughney, followed by Arcela Nunez Alvarez.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you very much for the stop, trust us, and thank you for your endeavor. I'm a 30-year resident of Oceanside. I moved to Oceanside, and it wasn't long before I realized my community was bigger than one city. My shopping, going to the movies, another event was the hospital. That tri-city hospital brings our communities together naturally. Okay? And we've had some challenges with the hospital, and now we've got another challenge with the airport. I think our three communities need to stay together and be irresponsible to line out one of these communities or a portion of it such that they can have no input into the following, follow-up process. This is something that we need to keep together, and I don't want to be redundant. Most of these great speakers have done most of the talking for me. Thank you.
Before you go, sir, if it's agreeable to you, would you state your name for the audio record? Thank you. Arcela Nunez Alvarez, followed by Leila Panagides.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Arcela Nunez Alvarez. I have lived in San Marcos for almost 40 years. I am one of the co-directors of Universidad Popular, the People's University. We are a community-based grassroots organization that is dedicated to promoting education and civic participation. I predominantly work with communities of immigrants who have come from Latin America, anywhere from Mexico and Central America all the way south. Our work takes us to every corner in North County. I am a representative of the Spanish-speaking, Latinx, Mexican, Chicana communities. We are a legally protected group. We have experienced historic disenfranchisement, voting discrimination. It is for this reason that we ask and petition that our cultural group and our language group be considered a community of interest. Our population is concentrated along the 78 corridor from Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, even in Carlsbad, and out in the rural areas along the 76. Essentially, we are along the 76 and the 78 corridors. We want District Five to be representative of half of the population, which we include our communities. We hope that our voting rights and our political representation is protected, and we thank you for promoting representative democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Leila, and I'm sorry for mispronouncing your last name, followed by Esther Sanchez.
Panagides.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. I join those in thanking you for your public service. We count on people like you to contribute to a functioning democracy. My name is Leila Panagides, and I am so grateful to live in this beautiful city of Carlsbad. My communities of interest include business leaders, working parents, environmentalists, law enforcement, and cities impacted by Palomar Airport. And if you've sat here for the last hour, you've seen, you've heard some of the impact of that airport. With a long history of mutual interest in comprising one-fifth of the county's population, I would like to see District Five include the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido. These cities are grouped together, given its proximity to the 78 corridor, so much so that in 2015, these cities came together to create Innovate 78, which is managed by the San Diego Economic Development Corporation to foster business innovation, tech startups, and economic development. On a personal note, I'm an amateur archer and member of the Willow Creek Archery Club in Escondido. So, I am often driving east on the 78 to exit 15 Nordall Road to reach the archery club. Please consider the economic interest, the environmental, the geographical, and the avocational interest of these five-city residents to establish a single-member supervisory district in the County of San Diego Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Esther Sanchez, followed by Dennis Randall.
Good afternoon, and thank you for meeting in Carlsbad, though I wish you had been meeting also in Oceanside. My name is Esther Sanchez, born and raised in Oceanside, part of a five-generation Oceanside family. My dad came to Oceanside in the 30s. So, I have a long history. Our family has a long history in Oceanside, and I've learned it orally, studied it, whatever. And primarily, the Latino community came to North County because of our agrarian roots. Many of our families were farmworkers. And in fact, and I remember before Five, there was no Five, and so when that came in, some of our family got displaced into Vista and Escondido and maybe even Valley Center, as well as Carlsbad, by the way. So, I feel that the North County cities of Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, and also the unincorporated area of Fallbrook, and also Camp Pendleton, let's not forget Camp Pendleton, are all part of this very unique place that we call North County, that we commonly call North County and think that everything else is not really North County. But the reason why is because of this history, because, in fact, in 2017, most of these cities along this area received a letter basically saying, look, if you don't, if you don't go change from at-large district, at-large elections to by-district elections, we're going to sue you. So, guess what? We've all, along these cities, have had that experience of learning about communities of interest and also the fact that many of us have not had been able to be represented on our school boards, cities, water districts, fire districts. So, bottom line is, especially for the Latino community, we are asking that you include this area, keep this area together. This is actually a wonderful, a great opportunity to get Escondido back into District Five because 20 years ago, it was gerrymandered out, and we really desperately need Escondido back. We have the Sprinter Line from Oceanside to Escondido. We have the tri-city hospital, that's Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista. And you don't really see the boundaries between Oceanside and Fallbrook. We've got farms in Oceanside, maybe you don't know that. In fact, we're starting up some wineries, and most people don't even see those boundaries. Fallbrook has become where, it used to be the home of Tom Metzger, the, you know, the KKK guy, to now over 50% Latino. And now, what we want is to continue our work in empowering the Latino community and changing on the representation so there is, you know, the kind of representation that the voting rights. We're talking about our communities of color and all of us getting together, ensuring that we continue to have this kind of representation. And by the way, full disclosure, I'm also the mayor of Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Randall, followed by Karen Brennan.
First of all, I'd just like to thank all of you for your service in doing the good work. Appreciate that. My name is Dennis Randall. I've lived in North County, San Diego, for over half my life, including Oceanside, Vista, and Carlsbad, where I've owned homes in all three places. I live in Carlsbad now. I'm retired after a long career, and I'm a Coast Guard veteran. I now spend some of my time volunteering issues that I care about, including mentoring teenage boys on their often difficult journey to become young men and productive citizens. I have quite a few friends who are also veterans and take part in veteran groups and activities that help other veterans. Most of the veterans I see live along the I-78 corridor in Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, and Carlsbad. Our community is a large one and a very disparate one, but we all tend to come together to help each other when we can. Right now, there's an event called North County Veterans Standdown in Vista that is putting, pulling in many North County veterans as volunteers. My physical limitations keep me from being there today, so I'm here instead, asking that the Commission keep our North County bond in mind as you decide the boundaries of District Five. Our request is simple. Please don't sever the link of veterans who live along the I-78 corridor. Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, and Carlsbad have a community that needs your support to provide us with an unbroken veteran voice. Thanks for letting me speak today. Since I have a moment, I'm also going to just say, as an aside, all the best microbreweries are in the I-78 corridor. Don't mess that up.
Thank you. Karen Brennan, followed by Sam Ward.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your service. I'm going to continue the thought that Dennis talked about. My name is Karen Brennan. I'm a longtime North County resident, and I've lived in Carlsbad for over 20 years. I'm also an Army veteran. I'm retired following a long career in the high-tech field, and I now focus on volunteer work, most specifically on veteran issues and gun violence prevention advocacy. As a veteran, I've been actively engaged in multiple veteran groups and activities for years. And because of the large population of veterans, most, if not all, of the groups and activities involve veterans who live along the I-78 corridor in the cities of Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, and Carlsbad. We are a very distinct community of people who often band together to help each other. And it's in the case of the event going on right now in Vista, which Dennis mentioned, called the North County Veterans Standdown, where I was volunteering all day yesterday. This annual four-day event draws many veterans to support those who need our help. It's emotional, and it's also very uplifting to see the success stories that result of this. So, because of this event, you may not likely see too many other veterans here today. This is a critical time for our region, and I'm here to urge the Commission to please keep veterans and active-duty service members in mind as you decide on how best to define what constitutes the heart of a community. We ask that our lifeline to each other be made stronger, not weaker, by your decision, and to please keep us together in District Five. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak today, and again, thank you for all of your service as well.
Thank you. Sam Ward, followed by Julie Hines.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Ward. I'm a 20-year resident of Carlsbad. First, want to thank each and every one of you for contributing your time, your energy, and your intellect to this vitally important process. Very grateful for your service. Like most of the speakers today, I'm here today to encourage you to keep the communities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido in District Five. As the speakers before me have noted, Mayor Sanchez and Council Member Blackburn, we share a critical history together. We're from transitioning from largely rural agricultural communities to bedroom communities, and now to communities that are each focused on developing business together and in concert. We share critical infrastructure with the Sprinter Line. We share two critical east-west transportation corridors, the 76 and 78, and we share critical watersheds that feed into each of the three lagoons in Carlsbad. These communities of interest have all been recognized previously in districting these communities together, and I strongly encourage you to do so moving forward. As well as many of the speakers have recognized and will continue to recognize, we all share the impacts of the Palomar McClellan Airport, which is, which, you know, the communities of the coast do not share. While I recognize that there is some interest in maintaining the coastal communities, I am one of those rare folks who commutes every single day from Carlsbad to downtown San Diego. I can tell you that the coastal communities have done a fantastic job without sharing a supervisory district of maintaining the coastal, coastal, coastal transportation corridors and maintaining the focus on our, on maintaining our beaches. So, thank you for your time. So thank you for your time.
Good day. I'd like to say hello, and my name is Julie Hines. And I am very interested in people of color and people misrepresented in the new demographics. From your chart, the difference in the population between 2010 and 2020, it's very clear to me that because of the changing demographics that we have, we must represent the underrepresented people and people of color and social justice for all. So I want you to think of, in the past, how redistricting has always been to benefit white people. And now, we need to keep in mind all the people that have moved into different areas, and they want to be represented here in District Five. So my point is that I am in support of District Five to include the Five Freeway on the 78 corridor and to also comprise Carlsbad. And even though I'm a resident of Encinitas, and I support Teresa Bocham and Molly Wood's Drake, and what they had to say about redistricting today, I do have an interest in Vista, because I taught there for one year, and it has changed quite a bit since when I taught there. And we need to think of the future and how our people are going to be represented, and not do it by way of what other white people have to say about how it should be redesigned. Thank you.
Martha Alvarado, followed by Tazin Nizam.
Good afternoon. My name is Martha Alvarado. I am a resident of Oceanside. I've lived in North County for 28 years. I also teach primary school in Escondido. I've taught for 21 years. I'm a Marine Corps veteran and a school board trustee on the Vista School Board. I've lived all along the 78 corridor in the past 28 years. As a constituent of District Five, I've seen how people of color along the 78 and 76 corridor have been historically excluded in the governance of our county, of our state, and our municipalities and school boards as well. Only after the lawsuit by Shankman and Hughes that sued to make sure that there was representation, did we finally get people of color representing our population along the 78 and 76 corridor. My community of interest specifically today are working-class Latinos, Mexican-Americans, Chicanos, the Latinx community. We have very similar issues to deal with. I've seen how my students in Escondido and their parents, how they utilize the transportation along the 78 corridor from the Sprinter to the bus and the 78 as well when they carpool. We also share our educational goals with Cal State San Marcos, and I do believe that Escondido needs to be included in District Five of the county. I ask this commission to make sure that we represent working-class people of color in a just and legal way, and include all of us, from our agricultural workers in the unincorporated valleys of Palma, Palma Valley Center, to all the working-class folks along the 78 and 76 corridor, and please avoid the gerrymandering that occurred 20 years ago when they took Escondido out of District Five. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tazin Nizam, followed by Shabana Khan.
Assalamualaikum, everyone. Peace be upon you. I'm so delighted, on this beautiful day, to have you all volunteer your time and my beautiful community that decided to show up. So thank you, everyone. My name is Tazin Nizam. I'm the Director of the Council of American Islamic Relations, San Diego Chapter. I've attended many redistricting meetings with CPI and PATA. My community of interest is the Muslim community in North County, from Carlsbad all the way to Escondido. I shop in Carlsbad. I go to the beach in Oceanside. I live and pray in Vista. I get medical attention when I fall in San Marcos, which I recently did. And of course, I go to enjoy beautiful, loving, delicious food at Escondido. So my community of interest, just like myself, a lot of Muslim communities' lives are spread across 78, from Carlsbad to Escondido. So we ask today that you do not divide us. And as a Vista resident for 17 years, who lives just a hop, skip, and a jump away from the airport, I would be amiss to say that if you were to separate Carlsbad and Vista, my community, my neighbors, would not be advocating, would not be able to advocate for the abatements at the Carlsbad Airport, which are affecting us. I've lived there for 17 years, and now I can lay in bed and watch the airplanes go by. So this is affecting us daily at a very visceral level. We, as Vista residents, need to be part of this conversation of the airport. I'm also advocating here with my friends from the Citizens for a Friendly Airport, and just to hear, resonate all their voices. So I ask that the communities of interest of the Muslim community in North County not be divided, and the people of Vista be able to be at the table when we talk about the Palomar Airport. Thank you for all your time. Goodbye.
Thank you. Shabana Khan, followed by Lanell Sirana.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having this forum. My name is Shabana Khan. I've been a resident of this beautiful city of Carlsbad for over 20 years, and in District Five. So I also work in Carlsbad at a pharmaceutical company, and all four of my kids have gone through the entire school district in Carlsbad at several, many different schools. So living in Carlsbad, I have attended a mosque in Vista for over 20 years. And my kids and I, we have several friends and family members all along Vista, San Marcos, Escondido. And so as a member of the North County Muslim Community of Interest, so my North County community of interest is spread in Carlsbad and all along the 78. So I'm here today to advocate that Carlsbad continue to be part of District Five, and I'm here to respectfully request that my community of interest not be divided. Thank you very much for your time.
Lanell Sirana, followed by Maria Nunez.
Hello, my name is Lanell Sirana. And first of all, thank you for your time and all the hard work that you're putting in to make this happen. I had lived in Carlsbad for many years, and eight years ago, I moved to Vista. And until that time, I didn't realize how interconnected Carlsbad and Vista, San Marcos, and this whole area that we're speaking about today is. So I'm just here, I'm not going to repeat everything that everybody has said, but I just want you to know that, you know, the airport situation, it's huge. And you can even hear right now how much airport noise we're getting, even sitting here in this room. So you can imagine being in Vista and hearing that noise flying overhead. And I have to say, before, when I lived in Carlsbad, I wasn't really that involved in a lot of the community goings-on. And now that I am involved, it's important for us to get up here and speak about this. So keep District Five, you know, keep Carlsbad in District Five, and keep us all together. And please, look for, you know, any changes in the airport. We really do, Vista is really affected by it, and we're already being affected by it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final in-person advance request to speak is Maria Nunez.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Thank you for your service, Commissioner, and for giving us the opportunity to address you today. My name is Maria Nunez. I'm a resident of the city of San Marcos. San Marcos has been my home for over 40 years. I also have the pleasure and honor of serving as the council member in the city of San Marcos. And I know for a fact the reason that I have that pleasure and honor is because I was elected in a by-district election. I represent some of the most vulnerable and the most economically disadvantaged individuals in the city. I represent District One. It's a majority Latino district, and I know without the by-district elections, I would not have been elected to represent these individuals. And San Marcos is not unique. San Marcos is very similar to Escondido, to Vista, to Oceanside, right, where we have large Latino populations that really, until recently, were unrepresented. And so I'm here to ask you today and express my support, along with the other individuals that have done so today, to ensure that we are kept together, the cities along the 78, the city of Escondido, the city of Vista, and the city of Oceanside. And so thank you very much for your time and for allowing us to address you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll now turn to those participating remotely who have submitted an advanced request to speak. We have one request from Alina Junowabi. You'll hear or see a notification that you have been unmuted. You'll have three minutes to address the commission. If it's agreeable to you, please begin by stating your name for the audio record. Alina, you may need to unmute yourself. We don't hear you. I'll ask our audio technicians if anything needs to be done. Alina, we're not hearing you. If you're on Zoom, you may need to unmute yourself. Are you there? I see that you have now muted yourself, but I don't hear you when you unmute yourself. You are currently muted. There you go. I'm sorry, we're not hearing you at all. I'll give you another opportunity. I'll come back to you. But I'm going to mute you for the moment, and we'll see if we can get the audio issues worked out. So now we'll turn to those participating in person who have not requested to speak in advance. So if you haven't spoken to the commission and you would like to, you're welcome to come to the microphone at this time.
Hi. Unfortunately, something was wrong with my mic. My name is Alina Junowabi. I'm calling from Carr, San Diego. I live in Mermeza, but I'm very involved in Carlsbad area, especially in North County. I am an educator, so I spend most of my time, especially my weekends, teaching youth, empowering the youth as well. I'm also involved because we have several facilities that we worship in, mosques up in North County, especially in Escondido, Vista, San Marcos, and even in Carlsbad. One of the reasons why I'm calling is I want to make sure that District Five is kept together, because my community that is really underrepresented have been impacted by division. And by keeping us together, we're able to support one another as well as have a better sort of representation in that community. So I'm hoping that you can look into the Muslim community and see our diversity, as well as our contribution within the North County area, and keep us together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, anybody participating in person who would like to address the commission who has not done so already, you're welcome to come forward to the microphone. Not seeing any movement in the chamber, I'll turn to those participating remotely who have not requested to speak in advance. If you'd like to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the Raise Hand button on Zoom or by pressing *9 if you're participating by phone. Begin with Laura Welsh. You'll see or hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi, this is Laura, Wizard Fighter, San Diego. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So the community of interest that I'm representing is the beach-going community. And I really want to encourage this commission to try to maintain a long coastal vertical district because of the massive problem we're going to face with sea level rise. Sea levels are exponentially rising. Flooding will be a really big deal in the next 10 years, and we really need cohesive funding management policies to get the different cities together to coordinate on sand management, on things like relocation, on infrastructure protection. There's going to be so, so much to do. Some of that's already happening, and we'd really like to see a district that really deeply understands those issues and allows the different cities to coordinate. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll turn to Pamela Hammond. You'll see or hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You may need to unmute yourself, and you have three minutes to address the commission.
Thank you. My name is Pamela Hammond. Can you hear me? Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Good, thank you. I'm a retired teacher in Escondido, California. I've lived in Escondido for over 20 years. And I was a bilingual teacher, so I worked primarily with the Latino community here. So I'm just calling to support that community in Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, and Oceanside in their request to stay as one district along the 78. Escondido does not want to be divided. I think the great majority of people here that I've spoken with do not want our town divided between two districts, and would like to stay connected with the other cities along the 78. So I'm just calling to support that form of districting and support the Latino community along the 78 and in North County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One final call for public speakers, either in person or remotely. Either come to the microphone, if you haven't addressed the commission already, or raise a virtual hand. Do you have one additional virtual hand? Letitia Maldonado-Stamos. You have three minutes to address the commission. Letitia, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good. Thank you. My name is Letitia Maldonado-Stamos. I'm a resident of Fallbrook, have been here for almost 30 years. And I just, I came to this meeting to just kind of see the process and see how this commission is responding to the public. Myself and 20, 30 people here in Fallbrook were very, very involved in the redistricting process that took place here in Fallbrook in 2018, 2019, when we were in the midst of redistricting all five, well, four of our jurisdictions here in Fallbrook. And it was a tremendous effort that we, as grassroots community members, went through to establish our by-district election, so that we could have a Latino district in each one of those jurisdictions. Most of the help that we got, because we were very, very new to this, came from people with experience from Oceanside, from Escondido, from San Marcos. So our affiliation and affinity for that area is very, very strong. We are rural, but we have kind of a different rural identity. We're not a city, we're a village, you know, all that kind of stuff. But when we meet in Vista, I hope to bring more information to you about how we feel as a community in Fallbrook and our relationship to other communities that are near us. But I just wanted to just take a minute to thank you for the service, for giving the public an opportunity to weigh in and speak on behalf of their communities of interest. And I look forward to speaking with you all in Vista. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For the record, we now have 27 e-commerce plus three emails for a total of 29 public communications. I don't see any further movement in the meeting room or any further virtual hands. So that concludes public comments for today's public hearing. Sure.
Okay. I tried, procedure question to a map. I tried to do something, a tool that you have on your website?
Yes, it's a procedure.
A question having to do with your tool that you have on your website. I've been having a very difficult time with that. And when we did have that experience in doing the by-district, by-district, I want to say movement, but I want to say movement, but, because it was, we all got the same letter, right? I think 30 of us. Process, most of our cities had a way of drawing the maps and actually had the information about the populations. And my understanding is that by the 20th, there should be that capability. So will you be able to have that on the website so that we can do a little more precise about drawing up what we hope to have as District Five? Will you have that information? I don't know.
Would it be the same tool or would it be a different tool?
So. We expect.
Is your, is your mic, huh? Are your audio on?
We expect to. Also allow you to do what you start. That will occur after the statement. I expect that to be. Probably last season. Once the tool, once the data is released, our contractor has to input that data into the tool and ramp the tool up, so it'll take a couple of days after.
Will be released. I think the most recent update that we got is it is going to be released, I think, on the 18th. It was expected on the 20th. I think they're going to be a day or two early. But then there is some time for the, like he said, the demographer or for our consultant to load all of that and get it up on our website and usable with the tool that we will have.
We're hoping you'll have that probably by the 30th.
Oh, oh, for our next meeting?
Yes.
Chair Bama.
We will, can you all hear me okay? We will certainly have an update, including on something affectionately called the District Scenario Modeler. That, along with some other steps, should accomplish the mission, as Commissioner Servin and Co., Esther Garcia were saying. But I'll ask you to stay tuned for that meeting on the 23rd and also on our website. And for the person who actually requested it, and as well as anyone else interested, please make sure our staff has your information so that they can be in touch with you. But we'll, we'll ask you to follow up if you're still having issues. I think, though, most of that data will be available, certainly in the coming days, exactly when we hopefully have some more information on the 23rd.
Public hearing. And I don't know if Chair Bama, were you wrapping up?
I was going to. If we're at that point, you're good. So, thank you, David. Thank you, Commissioners, for your comments just now. But most of all, of course, thank you to the public. Thank you for taking your time out on what I know is a really nice day outside, and I hope everyone can enjoy it afterwards. I suppose the best thing I could say is to take up Mr. Scherzer's comment. Yeah, we feel it's pretty cool for us to be serving on this, but it's pretty cool of all of you to come and give us such great comments from such a diverse group. And I think all of us really, really appreciate, not just the time, but the quality of the comments. Not to single out anyone without unjust cause, but I do always try to recognize veterans. And Mr. Randall, Ms. Brennan, Ms. Alvarado, thank you very much for your service to the country, for your service to our veterans' communities. And I also want to make sure to thank all of the folks who've participated for all they're doing for their communities. Because it's not just how well you've explained to us your concerns, but all you're doing that I know you're doing each and every day. It is appreciated, and I say that just as a fellow resident. You all know how important this mission is, and we take it very seriously to draw lines that are truly representative with due regard for all sorts of issues, including coastlines, including airports, and including many of the issues that we've talked about today and many that I'm sure we'll be hearing about in coming days and that we've heard in our previous hearings. We can't do any of our work to integrate and address those comments into our central mission without your help. So hearing valuable feedback like this is incredibly important and something we're all incredibly grateful for. Thanks again. I hope everyone who's there in person has been able to fill out a survey card. If you're participating virtually, please see on the website or, I hope, in the chat box in a minute, the ways of participating, the online survey. That's additional feedback that just helps us do our mission. Now, regarding upcoming meetings, in particular, as you've already heard, we're going to have a meeting on Thursday, September 23rd, at the Vista Civic Center. The address there is 200 Civic Center Drive in Vista. The zip code's 92084. That will be a meeting with two hats, if you will. There will be a public hearing like this one, and as I said before, the one that is specifically scheduled for District Five, though, again, we'll take up comments from anywhere in the county. That public hearing will begin at 5:30. However, it will be preceded and followed by a regular bi-weekly meeting of the Independent Redistricting Commission. So in other words, we'll start our regular meeting at 4:00 PM at the same location and with virtual participation as well, at the Vista Civic Center. Around 5:15 or 5:20, we'll pause that meeting so that we can shift to a public hearing that will begin promptly at 5:30. We also have another public hearing coming up next Saturday in Spring Valley, at the Spring Valley Community Center, starting at 1:00 PM. And we'll talk about that later in the week. Those two meetings and many others, as Commissioners have already mentioned, are available on our website. I hope everyone can take advantage of that, and I hope by the time we next talk, you'll have access to that data and integrating that data into our mapping tools that will help you provide us even more feedback. So it's all greatly appreciated. Thank you for your participation today. Thank you for all you're doing. And with that, I adjourn this public hearing at 2:39 PM. Thank you again.